Good evening. We'd like to begin our November meeting with the flag, please.
Praise your religion, Jesus Christ, and the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first thing on our agenda this evening is seven o'clock. It's advertised, it's been advertised in the paper. We have a public hearing ordinance number three twenty, option to purchase eleven point four seven eight acres across the road here. Is there anyone here reference to the public hearing, reference to buying the land? Okay, we'll close that part of the meeting. No one here for that, and then we'll open up our regular meeting. If everybody's had a chance to look over the minutes and operating statements from last month, I'd like to have a motion to approve.
I make a motion that we approve the October twenty twenty five operating statements, October twenty seven twenty twenty five council meeting minutes, and November ten twenty twenty five work session minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
No's? Okay. Next thing on the agenda is quantum financial statements.
I'll make a motion that we approve Ponton's financial statements for October twenty twenty five.
I'll second.
You can second, just can't vote on it.
Oh, okay.
Okay, alright. We have a motion and a second. Any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
No's? Okay. Moving right along. Okay, under my report, we have action item on ordinance number three twenty. It was advertised. I guess we should read this whole thing. This is where we had the public hearing, and it's proposed to buy, purchased of eleven point four seven acres across the road, southwest intersection of Les Locust Street and East White Street. Was advertised, and we just had our public hearing. After any other comments or questions, reference to the land that we want to purchase. Hearing none, we're in line for a motion to approval.
I'll make a motion that we approve ordinance number three twenty to purchase the eleven point four seven eight acres.
I'll second that.
Okay, any questions? Hearing none, all is in favor, aye?
Aye.
No's? Okay. Okay, under some other things on my report, this was last week, we had honor of Congressman Johnny Orlinsky was in Carroll County. He was in Tontown that morning for their business breakfast, and he came to Union Bridge for a visit, and we had a discussion on some federal regulations, and of course, we begged and borrowed, and I was begging for money from the federal government. So we'll see how that goes for our new sewer plant that we want to build. Took him down and showed him toward a plant and kind of an eye opener thing for him to get down there. He, it was quite an eye opener for him when he looked at that plant. So like anybody else, he says that we should put in a request and request some money for next year's budget, and request high and good little. So we'll do best we can, and we'll beg, borrow, and steal from anybody we can to get a little bit of money. So it was an interesting morning with him. Spent about forty-five minutes, an hour in Union Bridge. So we do have a lady, we had talked a little bit about looking for a spot, a lady to want, some people want to put a food pantry box on the, somewhere in town where people have access to it. I don't know if anybody's looked at maybe somewhere around the monument or somewhere on the square. We kind of look around, but just give you some ideas to think about what we can tell her for next month where they think they can put it. We don't have to do anything, we just give them a spot to put it. They'll take care of putting things in it and keeping it up to date and taking care of it. We just have to give them a spot, so. Just look around. I guess we can maybe find a place around the square somewhere. Maybe, I don't know, in the area where the library box is, or somewhere in the vicinity up there, but just look and see what you see. Be a pretty good spot, maybe it's at central town, and there's some people that still do a lot of walking in town, some of the older citizens, make it convenient for them. That's what this lady thinks, so we'll see how that works out for her. Moving right along, we'll go down to Carroll County Department of Citizen Service, so.
Morning, Mr. Mayor. Evening, Mr. Mayor.
That's okay.
Some council members. I think we had asked for fifteen minutes on the agenda. I see we've got five. I don't want to be disrespectful of your time.
That's all right. You can take fifteen.
And I'm gonna let Addie go ahead and give you a presentation. We've been, we came here, met with you earlier in the year, and said we were gonna come out and reach out to some of your citizens and whatnot. Had a really good turnout. We partnered with the Judy Center over here at the school. So we know that all the people we were catching over there to get their opinions on kind of where we need to go with services, were lived in or around Union Bridge. We also had hit the food distribution over here, and I know we got a lot of folks from Tontown that also show up over there. And was at the Duck Derby, and I think I met more people that weren't from Union Bridge there than were from Union Bridge. But it's an opportunity to try to make sure we could get as much feedback from citizens living here in Union Bridge. When I talk to you guys before, the Enough Act is the governor's initiative to try to end child poverty. We're trying to do what we can to bring services here. I'm glad to hear YSB's been out here and talked to you all about trying to see what they can do to get their services out here. We're trying to push our providers. I look at my role at the LMB as trying to figure out how to help our young people become successful adults. And a lot of them are struggling, either, you know, may have some interaction with the juvenile justice system, or their parents may not, may not be doing the best job with them or whatnot. And we're just trying to figure out how to get them the support so the families and the youth can be successful. I'd like to thank the commissioner for coming out. He's been, the commissioners have been very supportive of our efforts in the Enough Act, and Celine for being here to support us tonight. And I'm gonna go ahead and let Addie just run you through this report real quick. I'll ask her to be briefed. And then there's a few things I want to ask you guys as to how we can, it's your town, and we've kind of been poking around here, trying to figure out what's needed. But I'd like to get your feedback as to how we can best help people in town who might need, might need a little bit of extra help.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm Abby, and I was the enough campaign coordinator here, so I did pass out our presentation that we have. So I will go over it pretty brief for you, just highlight a few things that we did. So our first page here with the methodology is just showing you guys how we got all these answers, and how we gave, got this presentation. It's where we collected from over four hundred residents here. We asked for a survey. We did focus groups and community forums to engage with our residents directly. We also took some data from national sources, local sources. We kind of compiled it all together to create this needs assessment. For overview here, it's just showing you how we, again, we, the local management board, and we had a partner, Dewey's Partners, and how we came up with some of these data points and conclusions here. And then we have an acknowledgements page, just showing you guys, just, this is just a few amount of people that helped us. Our local management board, our committee, planning committee, and then of course, we have lots of other partners and outside communities, organizations that helped us throughout this. For the Enough Initiative, we have four pillars here, so just to kind of keep in mind that the work here is guided by the Enough Initiative, as Ed said, which is based off of these four main pillars here. So each of the slides that we have coming up highlight strengths, challenges, opportunities for improvement, and one of these areas of focus. So we have some key takeaways here. So our first pillar here is our high quality childcare and education. So while we're looking at childcare and education in Carroll County, there is a lot of strength to celebrate. Our high school graduation rate is ninety-five percent, which is above the state average. Tenderness is strong, and early literacy is a bright spot, with sixty-one percent of our third graders proficient in ELA compared to the forty-seven percent statewide. And we also know that our community here places a high value on our K through twelve education, early childhood programs, school enrollment, and school-based supports. And we do see some challenges that need some attention. Childcare continues to be one of the top concerns for our community members here, as the costs are high and public K is limited. And there are limited affordable after-school or summer programs. We have some kindergarten readiness variation over, the overall rate is fifty percent. And then we also see that one in five students is struggling with chronic absenteeism, and the reports of bullying have nearly doubled since 2019. In Westminster and Union Bridge, our place-based disparities show lower readiness and achievement tied to in part of our higher poverty rates in those areas. We know there are opportunities for improvement, as families are looking for support with affordable childcare, bullet prevention, and mental health services, as well as tutoring. And then the next slide is just our data point to show you some comparison data on ELA and algebra proficiency. So for the next pillar, we have our families are healthy. So looking at the health of our families in Carroll County, there are several strengths again. Our infant mortality rate is nearly half the state average, and most residents have health insurance here, with only about three percent uninsured. Low birth rates are below state average, and physical inactivity among adults have decreased from twenty-three percent to eighteen percent. Collaboration with our agencies, nonprofits, and providers is strong in this area. And services like in-home therapy, food assistance, and community-based supports are making a difference here. As evidence, some challenges remain. We have obesity affects many preadults and twelve percent of high school students. Poor mental health days among adults are increasing, averaging about five per month. Mental health counseling and inpatient services are met with long wait times, and many providers are not accepting new patients or private insurance. And nearly one in five of our high school students have seriously considered suicide. Our opportunities for improvement here include expanding some mental health services and in-home therapies, increasing some support for ADHD, autism, and developmental needs, and increasing food options and access in some of our key areas here. And then, yeah, we kind of stack it up again with a slide for data there, so that is our mental health among high school students. And it compares there to the county, to the state. So our next pillar is families are economically stable. So there are clear strengths in our child county. Our child poverty rate is at six percent, which is below the state and national averages. Our median household income is strong at nearly a hundred and sixteen thousand. And we do have robust supports in place, including mentoring, job training, food assistance, faith-based program, that all play a very critical role in supporting our families here. Our key challenges do continue with housing as the second highest concern reported by our community members. We have nearly one in four households in the county are ALIS, meaning that they earn above the poverty line but are still struggling to afford basic needs. Food insecurity also affects more than one in ten residents, and limited public transportation options continue to be a barrier to accessing services. When we're looking at our place-based disparities, we have Union Bridge has an eighteen percent poverty rate overall, and a thirty-three percent child poverty rate, while in Westminster, poverty rate impacts about eleven percent of the residents and thirteen percent of their children. And in both areas, over half of the households are ALIS population. We do have positive programs like the Career and Tech Center. We have doors, opportunity works, mentoring, workforce development initiatives, a lot of programs that are already making an impact here. We always, of course, have opportunities to strengthen our supports by expanding maybe emergency housing, sober living options, refining transportation routes and schedules, and deepening some collaboration across our agencies. And then there are two data slides for this one. The first one there is our child poverty rates, the overall poverty rate compared to childhood poverty. And then the second data point there is our ALIS population data. So that's going to be comparing Westminster, Union Bridge, to the county, as well as to the state. And then we have our safe and thriving communities. So when we're looking at safe and thriving communities, we have faith-based and spiritual support networks that are strong and provide a lot of constant stability for many families here. We have community events and gatherings that help foster a sense of connection and belonging. And we do have safe, accessible recreation spaces and some walkable neighborhoods. And there are programs in place to support families experiencing homelessness. At the same time, we do have challenges, of course, in this area, which homelessness is at a five-year high with five hundred and fifty-six individuals in 2024. Student homelessness has increased since 2020, growing from one fifteen to two oh one. We've also seen a twenty-one percent increase in juvenile detention complaints over the past two years, with youth crime concentrated among those ages twelve to seventeen. Community members have expressed concerns about trust in law enforcement, and long wait times for vouchers and rental assistance continue to put stress on our families here. Looking closer at some disparities, we do have safe recreation spaces are limited in these place-based areas. Sidewalks and bike lanes are inadequate in many areas, and our housing quality and landlord accountability remains an ongoing issue. Again, though, we do have faith-based support services, services for youth experiencing homelessness, and a lot of community organizations who continue here to make a positive difference. Our opportunities exist to build on these strengths, such as expanding affordable and inclusive youth activities like recreation, arts, and cultural events, continuing education, and then relationship building with landlords, developing early and intervention diversion programs for youth, and then improving affordable internet access and strengthening communities' trust with our law enforcement. Overall, this area does highlight both the resiliency of our community and our opportunities for improvement to continue creating these safe and connected neighborhoods.
Yeah, can you move on to the community plan? You're taking it all the time.
You're fine. You're fine.
Yeah, just go right ahead, yeah.
So we have, again, our, that's our homelessness data to just show you the data points of what we just discussed. So then our key considerations here, that the plan is not just a list of findings, that we want to treat it as a roadmap, that the needs assessment gives us both the data and the lived experience that we need to target these coordinated investments in Carroll County's future. So these are by the Enough Initiative pillar of some cross-cutting key considerations here that we were, address readiness gaps, chronic absenteeism, behavioral health challenges, and while also expanding early learning enrichment and career pathways. For family's health, we can build on our community strengths, but also need to confront rising obesity, food insecurity, and our mental health concerns. When it comes to economic stability, Union Bridge and Westminster City need to be prioritized, with poverty reduction, access to childcare, workforce training, and safe housing at the forefront. In our safe and thriving communities, we must expand early interventions, mentoring, and culturally responsive services, while also improving access to safe recreation and community trust. And some strategies that we can use across all four pillars will be things like coordinated public information campaigns to shifts and mindsets, cultivating local ambassadors in these priority areas, creating more spaces for youth to share their experience and insight. And we can also scale solutions that are already working, such as ride-share vouchers, housing-first models. And ultimately, this plan is giving us a shared foundation for this coordinated action, guiding our resource allocation, and then building our partnerships that respond to both these data points and the real experience of our, of our families. And that's kind of how we're using that to guide our impact, which is then... So this is kind of something that we developed from this. This is our asset map that will be linked on the Carroll County's local management board website. So this is a tool that is a visual representation of resources available across our county. We met with some public safety personnel to explore whether the type of map would be useful for them. As I assured us, it would be a valuable source, so we went ahead and made it something that we invested a lot of time into. So this is how we then integrated it into our county GIS system. So this is going to be an interactive and long-term tool for both our community and our partners here. So again, this is a visual representation, and it is color-coded. You can go on it. You can click the different categories that you may need help, or you could go by area that you're looking for specific resources as well. And then lastly, we'll get into our community plan, which is what we developed from our needs assessment. Our guiding principles, these are just kind of showing you what we did to help lead us to our community plan here. So our overall vision and mission guiding this work here is, our vision is a healthy and engaged Carroll County, where all children, youth, and families and communities thrive. Our mission is to connect community partners, strengthen and coordinate resources, and advocate for accountable systems of support across the county. The community plan outlines clear priorities to achieve this vision, and it calls for stronger collaboration among partners, greater engagement of our children, youth, and families in decision-making, and the regular convening of diverse stakeholders to advance our shared goals here. And the plan establishes shared results and progress indicators to ensure the accountability that these measures will allow us to track collective impact and ensure that every effort here contributes to our stability, opportunity, and success here for our children, youth, and families in Carroll County.
So a lot of work to put together the community plan, but now it's, what do we do about it? Now that we, now that we know we've got some issues that we need to address. And one of the things we're doing is the local management board, there's a lot of, we've kind of prioritized services. We're, there are a number of different things that we fund through Carroll County Youth Services Bureau and, and some other organizations. But we're, as part of our proposals, when we're, we're putting a number of these out for RFP right now, we're asking folks how they're gonna engage in some of our highest poverty areas. And Union Bridge and part of Westminster is two of those areas that we're focusing on. And I'm glad that CCYSB came out here and met with you folks, because we're talking about, well, one of, one of the big problems is transportation. But I think, you know, as the commissioner would tell you, we, we could run routes everywhere and getting people to get on the bus and go get the services they need, and having it be convenient for them. I just, I think there's been a lot of effort thought, thought about how we can run a public transportation system, which doesn't ever seem to get us where we need to be here in Carroll County. So we've been talking to our service providers about, you know, how do we meet people where they are in these communities? And I, I know one of the things we've, we've talked about is that, there, there are a couple of things. I know you've talked to YSB about partnering with this church over here that does the food distribution. Is it once a week that they're, they're doing food distribution?
Once a week.
Yeah, so I, I know they're working on that, and we're gonna require our other partners as part of the plan to, to tell us how they're gonna engage here in Union Bridge. We have a, some of the programs that the, that the, that the LMB is funding, we have a youth housing stability program. Got a lot of problems with kids that are like fifteen to eighteen, worrying about where they're going when, you know, they have, they have parents that maybe have lived unstableized. When they get to be eighteen years old, where, where they're gonna live, because the cost of housing here in Carroll County is just so high. And we've got a program that works with that, and works with those youth, and helps get them stably housed, so that they can get employment and things of that nature. There's a, we've got a suicide intervention and prevention program, because that's, we, we have very high rates of suicidal ideation here in, in Carroll County, and a lot of concerns about poor mental health days. So we want to make sure that those services are available to people here that can't necessarily get to Westminster for those types of services. I, I guess, as an LMB, we met, and, and kind of our idea, and we'd like to know what, what you guys, what you all think would be the best way to approach it. I know there's been talk about, folks have said, well, could we potentially use Union Bridge's community center for like group activities? If they have like group mental health things for, for young people or something like that, where we could potentially have meetings there. I know, really not conducive, I, I've seen the space up there for, for like individual office space for like, for providers. But I guess the question I would have for you all is if we have somebody that wanted to bring a service up there or something like that, maybe once a month or twice a month or something like that, is, is who we would need to coordinate with, and who we would need to talk to? And, you know, we want to make sure that we don't cause you any inconvenience or cost, and, and we could have to work out exactly what that might look like. But I think the one thing that we, when we met as an LMB, there were, on this page here, there's a list of, I don't know, twelve organized, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve organizations that said they'd like to come out here to Union Bridge and, and kind of have a fair. And YMCA was like, we could bring a Y on the fly, and we could have activities for the family. And the Boys and Girls Club is like, we could, we could do some activities for the family, so that we could get people to want to come out and engage with us and talk to us about what services they could actually, what actually services we could bring to Union Bridge that would be helpful to them, and whether it's we bring things here monthly, or, or, you know, we, it's just like the bus services. We come here, and, and we can't get people to engage, that's, that's not gonna, gonna work for anybody. So I think we need to start building trust within the community. I really, Addie was gonna be our, our face of the community for this, and I really wanted people to get used to seeing her. We've hired a new person. Her name's Liz Camelin, and unfortunately, she got a very bad migraine today and couldn't be here with us. But we really want to have folks working with, with your Judy Center and other folks in the community to figure out how we can, can help make sure that, that people get the services they need, so we can help the young people become successful adults. But this whole list of, this whole list of service providers, so they'd be willing to come, and everybody would bring an activity, and maybe we, maybe we'd even be able to serve pizza or something and try to have a gathering. We were thinking, I, I don't know, our thought was, maybe we'd do it in combination with when the United Way has their food distribution over here, but maybe it's best with partnering with the church. I, I guess I'd like to get your feedback as to how we, how we best get to the next step with folks, so we can figure out how we, we can better serve people in the community. We know what some of the issues are, and we know who some of the providers are that can help deal with some of the issues that some of your residents are dealing with, and, and in and around Union Bridge. And that, you know, just because somebody lives out, outside the town limits, that doesn't mean we're not gonna, we're not gonna serve them. But, you know, I, I think what we'd like to do is just figure out a way to try to engage the community, maybe something in the spring, if you all would be open to that, or if you have another idea of how we could best engage the community, so that we can try to get some of the service providers to, to be able to be accessible to the people who live here in Union Bridge. And I know the health department's got a, I mean, another option is the health department's got a mobile vehicle. If we could ever get them to get that out and into the community, that, that they have actually got office spaces in that, and maybe that's a way to go. But, you know, I, I really kind of need your feedback as, as a council and people who live here as to what would be helpful to, to people in Union Bridge. And I could sit here and come up with great ideas all day long, but I don't know what people here are gonna be willing to do or not do. And, and, you know, it, it may be a conversation that we had, maybe we need to sit down with you during a work session or something like that, just figure out what that looks like. The other thing that we have available is, is we can bring training to the community. There's, if you've got a grassroots organization that just needs some help with, and I know some grassroots organizations where they got really good ideas, but they don't know how to do the books, or they don't know how to, you know, even think about applying for a grant. They don't know what's available to them out there. We, we have some funding that would be available, that we could bring training to organizations, if there are organizations that could use something. We just need to know what it is. We did, we did do a Bridges Out of Poverty training, and maybe it wasn't the best time, time of the day, because it was Ellen that said to me, well, you did it during the day, and it's hard for people to, to get to that. But we were just trying to raise awareness amongst a lot of the organizations about what people who are living in poverty actually, the decisions they have to make on a daily basis as to whether I pay for this, or pay for that, or I don't pay my water bill, and then, then the mayor shuts my water off. It's, you know, trying, trying to help raise some awareness about that. But I don't know what training, and, you know, there, there seem to be fewer grassroots organizations here. Maybe we need to do training for some of the organizations that are in Westminster, and then try to get them here. I, I don't, this is something that we need feedback from you, and that's why we're here before you today, is just trying to understand how we could help in Union Bridge make a difference here, because that's, that's what this whole Enough Act is about. And maybe we need to look for funding sources to fund something that specifically would come here to, to Union Bridge. The governor is very much big on focusing on these high poverty areas, and, and that's where we're supposed to try to put our resources first. So that's kind of where we are on things. I don't know if you have any feedback from now, or you think maybe we can sit down during a work session, maybe talk through a few of these ideas, or... So I'll shut up and, and see if you, see if you have any thoughts. um, so I'll shut up and, and see if you, see if you have any thoughts.
I think it sounds like a good idea to bring some of these organizations, you know, we can come up with a date when the community center is open. Like late afternoon, probably in the evening hours when people get off from work. And you could get maybe a half a dozen or dozen of them to set up a fair and, and could bring people in, they could sit there and talk about their needs. But you know, things are uh, we have to coordinate it when the center's not rented. And uh, you know, we don't have spaces there where they can have permanent office space, but set some tables up and different stages there, stations. And uh, I think it would work probably.
A- activity wise, if, if, if somebody were interested in potentially using that periodically for like, I don't know whether they, whether it was uh, youth groups or something. Because down at YSB in, in Westminster, they have youth mental health groups where they got, get like five or six kids together in a group and they, and, and they're, you know, I don't want to compare it to Alcoholics Anonymous because it's not, you know, they don't have substance use problems, they have mental health problems. And they kind of talk through them together as a group and their group therapy and that's been shown uh, evidence based to be successful. If we could bring something like that here where you wouldn't necessarily need an office space, we could coordinate something like that. Who, who, who would be the point of contact we would reach out to here if we wanted to try to coordinate that on an occasional basis?
Uh, I guess work through the office here and see what times, you know, buildings available up there. And then we'll get, you know, some volunteers. They had uh, several years ago, they had uh, through the community foundation, they had uh, computers up there. When Lynn Wheeler was there and they had computers up there, some of the kids went up and used the computers in the evenings for their, to do their homework and job applications, things like that. That was, that's probably been what, ten years, ten, twelve years ago?
It's been a good while.
And I think that worked well, but I think it got to the point where the people that said they were going to be there to, for the oversight, quit coming. And then you just had kids there running loose by themselves and starting to tear up things. But I think as long as we have somebody there that's going to be overseeing it and, you know.
We don't have wifi up there.
Yeah, not anymore yet.
But we, we, we can, I mean, some of that we figure out if, if, if we, if we find organizations that are interested. And I, I guess, you know, if, if like the health department were, were interested in bringing their vehicle, it's uh, I, I don't know. I, I got, and I, I, I had a hard time believing it and they said, well, they don't want that there in, in Union Bridge. I was like, why wouldn't they want that there in Union Bridge? It's an opportunity, uh, I don't know, you can park it just about anywhere.
Yeah, it was discussion on that, it was, the, the biggest thing we was, was seeing about uh, where it was going to set and, and who was going to be, how was going to be insured. Because if everybody knows anybody makes a wrong step today, they're going to try to sue somebody and they would take them out there and Lehigh Quer and get rid of them.
Yeah, so I, I mean, that's, I, I, I'd love to talk to you guys more. I, I, I don't want to take up your, we've taken up a lot of your time, but I, I, I'd really like to continue this conversation as to figure out how we can best support Union Bridge because that's, that's what the Enough Act is kind of all about, trying to make a difference for, for the people living here in your community. And, and it's not that you guys don't know what's best in your community for, for people who's in your community. It's just we're trying to coordinate the resources so that we can bring them here and, and help support you all as the, as the local elected officials. So I really appreciate your time tonight. We'll uh, we'll have to get together and try, I, I think sometime in the springtime because obviously you're not going to get anybody out during the winter time talking, want to come out there. We could talk about what, how, how you think we best could get folks there. Because I think, I, I had originally thought about the food distribution day with the United Way, but I do think you're probably right. Uh, um, Councilwoman Cut sail in that probably maybe three quarters of that population is not Union Bridge folks. There, there are some, but uh, I mean, we really want this to be a kind of a, a, a Union Bridge type uh, event if we're going to try to figure out what's needed here. You know, the, the Boys and Girls Club and the YMCA have, have both uh, told us that they're interested in, in trying to figure out how we keep them engaged and how we can help support them in providing, you know, I, I think one of the biggest things we've heard was just that there's not anything for kids to do sometimes after, after school and they, they just, you know, if there was something for, for them to do, that might be helpful. And I know it's great that we've got the after school programs in the middle school and I think some of the kids probably from this area are engaged in the middle school up there with the uh, with the um, with the Boys and Girls Club. But you know, what do we do with the elementary schoolers and, and even the, the high schoolers to, to try to help them find something productive? In their, in their afternoon. So I'll stop there and, and uh, we'll, we'll continue to reach out. You may hear uh, I, I want to really try to get Liz engaged because it's going to be her, she's going to be the face of this. And like Addie was the face of this and she's uh, she's doing our in-school community supports now, so um, under the consortium. So we, we really, I think we'll be able to make some difference there too as far as uh, uh, truancy prevention and things like that. Try to keep the kids engaged in school is something that we're working on with that as well. So I appreciate your time, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You've got a lot of really good information here that the council can look over and come up with some ideas and we get back together.
Any, anything you got, reach out to all of our contact information in the back. I really appreciate your attention and, and allow us to try.
Well, thank you very much, it's very informational.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on the list, Mr. Hill.
Martin KP Hill, President of Woodhaven Building and Development, forty-one seventy-five Hanover Pike. We are the owners and developers of the property identified as Jackson Ridge. I spoke to the council at their work session on October the sixth and shared information about the possible, whether available capacity in your wastewater treatment plant. And not here to discuss that tonight, but I did share at that time that we were working on getting the well out at our property up and running again. And we had um, Eichelberger out of Gettysburg and then we pulled the pump. The pump itself is bad, rather than just replacing that part of it, we're putting in a totally new pump. Before we do that, we have them scheduled for next week to come out and do pump tests, drawdown tests, yield, and then all of the analysis for approval for public use. So I wanted to bring you up to date on that and let you know where we are. If you have any questions, I could try to answer those. Hearing none, you know how to find me.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Deputy McGinnis. Oh, I'm sorry, Mandy.
I have something tonight.
Sorry.
Trying to skip me. Um, I have ordinance um, three twenty-one up for introduction tonight. Um, this is for the sale of the adjacent property to forty-seven fourteen Ladiesburg Road and Union Bridge. Um, this is to approve the sale of the five thousand six hundred and twenty-seven square feet of property that is adjacent to the property for sale to the property owner as an add-on. Um, that is to Timothy Kelly. Um, in, for the price of three thousand six hundred dollars plus any and all costs associated with the sale and transfer. And Don, I believe, is he up to date whenever all his payments at this time?
Yeah, he's up to date.
Okay, um, we were able to finally get the meets and bounds um, description from RTF Associates, which is on the back of this. Um, as marked as Exhibit A. Um, so that will be included in the deed if this all goes through.
All right.
Um, so this will be up for a public hearing at the December council meeting.
Okay, all right, thank you.
That's all I have.
Now I can move on. Sorry about that.
All right, good evening, everybody, uh, Deputy McGinnis, Carroll County Sheriff's Office. Um, I'll be real quick, uh, between October twenty-seventh and November twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, the Carroll County Sheriff's Office responded to forty-two records within the town of Union Bridge. The records included one accident with an injury, uh, four alarm calls, five miscellaneous calls, one assault, um, eighteen building checks, one disturbance, two domestic disputes, one narcotics violation, two harassments, two check welfares, one parking complaint, three suspicious activities and one traffic stop. Two reportable calls uh, included, uh, on eleven eight twenty-five at eight oh eight AM, sheriff's deputies uh, stopped a vehicle around Dollar General on Green Valley Road. The vehicle was observed by the deputy traveling seventy-one in a forty mile per hour. Marty, thanks for that earlier, uh, accord, uh, according to the radar unit. The vehicle was stopped and the driver was issued multiple citations included, including reckless driving due to the amount of speed. Uh, that case was closed. On eleven seventeen twenty-five at twelve thirty-nine AM, sheriff's deputies responded to the two hundred block of East Elgar Street for a check welfare. Upon arrival, a determination was made that a subject needed to be transported to Carroll Hospital Center for professional care revolving around mental health. And that case was closed. Um, that concludes my report, rather, rather brief this month. There was a few items I guess we discussed, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll check in with you guys afterwards about those few items. Uh, but just wanted to keep you up to date on that, so.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Committee reports, I guess we'll start with, Tony, work down the line.
Um, the only thing I have is who is our contact at Stan Ball's to do the street sweeping?
Stan Ball's doesn't do street sweeping, Lehigh does.
Oh, Lehigh, I'm sorry. Um, if we can contact them because Main Street, especially on the west side, the gutters are completely fitted.
We'll have to check and see if their machine's working, you can check on that, Donnie. But Lehigh's during Main Street for, they only do Main Street, they don't do the side streets.
I know.
Yeah, Donnie, a check on that and see who it is.
Can you text it to me?
They change people out there all the time, it's never the same person all the time.
That's fine. That's all I have.
Okay, Ellen?
Well, we had our food, the council food drive for the uh, food pantry here in Union Bridge on Saturday. And I got a truckload full of food that we delivered to the food pantry, it was really appreciated. Um, to that note, they said, uh, thank you, dear town council members, thank you for your generous donation of food and money to the Saint James Lutheran Church Food Pantry. We're so very grateful for your support and helping so many on, in need in our Union Bridge community. Your gifts will go for far in letting others know they are not forgotten. It really means so much. Thank you and happy holidays, Kim White, who's the, actually the person in charge of the food pantry. And I called to have some lights looked at up at the community center because we were at an event there and lights were dark.
Okay.
I think Logan's handling that.
Okay, is that your burger?
That's it.
That's great.
Uh, the other thing I got is uh, we talked about turning the, the front building, there's a couple rooms into uh, office space, storage space, we will. Uh, there is a, the, the old pump is still in there and the engine that operated it. And uh, Maryland Steam Historical Society uh, is interested in the pumping engine. They want to display it in their museum, uh, which I think would be great, uh, that people would get to see it. They will remove it.
That's a job.
Yeah, so that's, that's huge right there that they're going to uh, they're going to remove it. Uh, we need, we, we just need a motion to uh, approve allowing them to do it. I, I made that motion that we allow.
To give it to them.
To give it to the Maryland Steam Historical Society, uh, the pumping motor.
Yeah, I'll second it.
A motion and a second, give this, historical society, steam society, any questions? Hearing none, all those are very right.
Aye.
Those motions carried.
And I, aren't they going to tag it donated by the town of Union Bridge?
Yeah, they want information on that, we can find.
It would be nice if we had some information on it. I don't know, those folks are probably gone.
They're, I just have some information that I was told over the years.
Okay.
Uh, and I'll, I'll work with them on that and let them know what I've been told about it over the years.
When I first started, we had a centrifugal pump area in the basement over there, uh, electrically driven, uh, before we went with uh, submersible. So I hadn't had nothing about this old pump.
Yeah, I'm not exactly sure, we go back through some minutes when that was, but that pump used to pump water from here up to the, the old water tower, water tank up at the community center. And the old engine started on kerosene and changed over to diesel and it's like the old engines used to do. So it's, it's, it was well-used for many, many years. So we'll give them all the information we can find or I think it'd be good to have it, you know, there and, you know, say it came from town of Union Bridge, so.
Yeah, yeah, Dawn and I talked about old minutes, uh, it's just fun and time to
Yeah, yeah.
To dig through that old handwritten, and if it's written in cursive, I don't know if we, I, I can't write cursive, I can maybe read it.
It's hard to read.
It is, it is, uh, but that's, that's all I have.
Okay, Laura?
Uh, okay, so a few times this month I spoke to Joy and Dawn and um, Master Deputy McGinnis regarding Shriner Court issues. I attended the Carroll County Downtown Meeting, I had a meeting with the Shriner Court residents. Um, I met with Perry and Youth Services about the needs of Union Bridge in relation to the Enough Act. On the fifteenth, we had the food drive and we collected, like uh, Ellen said, we collected a hundred forty-two dollars in cash and a truckload of, 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 of things. It was our most successful, I think it's like maybe our fifth year that we've had it and it was our most successful. And we did have a anonymous donation of a hundred dollars, so I want to thank that person. Um, I spoke to Dale the Lions Club about collaborating for future events like the Christmas tree lighting and the Lions Club help us. And I actually did speak to him about a little food pantry, that was um, which you just had talked about earlier. I um, let's see, called Tom McEdison to have the Christmas lights turned on and realized that um, they removed the meter in front of Elmer Wolf in twenty twenty-four. So we don't have a meter to light up the new lights that we just had installed. So, and they can't guarantee that it'll be done before Christmas. So um, oh, Coco and Candy Canes will be held on December twelfth, twenty twenty-five from six to eight PM at Town Square. And Santa will be there if you'd like to have your picture taken with him. And would you like me to announce this?
Yes.
Okay, so uh, Union Bridge is having a uh, Christmas decorating contest for homes. Um, and it was um, you received five hundred?
Yes.
He received, we received five hundred in anonymous donations um, for this, for prizes. So you must live in town limits, uh, the judging will be held the week of December fifteenth. Five winners will win one hundred dollars apiece and the categories are best overall, most traditional, best use of lights, most whimsical and best theme. And then checks will be presented at our December twenty twenty-five council meeting.
We'll have judges that do not live in Union Bridge to judge.
Get decorating.
The only thing I have this month is the, working on getting them lights fixed in front of the community center, so.
Okay, okay, community comments and concerns, we have any? Yes, uh-huh.
We received notification this week from Verizon that they're no longer offering the phone service that we currently have hooked up for some ungodly reason out at the pump house. And my thinking is not something to worry about until we get the system up and running. And probably technology has changed that we may not use a phone line, but whatever is required, we'll do. We've been paying for that phone line out there for ten or twelve years for some reason.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Originally that was for the auto dollar in event of a mishap there. So I don't, I guess I have to go cell-based. A lot of the um, Westminster were converted to cell-based for that very reason, Verizon won't service the uh, the old lines anymore.
Okay, uh, I do have um, public comment and this for the fire company. The fire company is going to do, they're going to be going near Santa Rods through town and the surrounding areas starting December the fifteenth to sixteenth and seventeenth. And the breakfast on the December the fourteenth, second Sunday of the month, that's uh, breakfast with Santa Claus. So bring your little kiddies out and everybody, or the big kids want to have breakfast with Santa. Uh, that will be taking place then. If, you'll have to look at the fire company website because they do one night in town in Union Bridge and one night they go like the Middleburg and they go outside to different areas of town, but they will be doing it three nights in a row unless it's raining, they'll reschedule that. I would like to recognize our commissioner back there, Joe, big guy, you have any good comments for us here this evening? You're a politician, politicians always got to talk, you know, that's what they always told me.
Well, I've learned from the best, Perry. Uh, thank you very much for having us this evening to present on the Enough Act and uh, Laura, if I may, um, this difficult And, uh, Laura, if I may, um, this difficulty or the, the challenge, I guess, that the electric companies having installing this box, send me the information, I'm happy to write a letter in support of you or anything that any of you need for anything for this town. Do not hesitate to let me know. I throw, I will throw whatever weight and influence I can behind you. And, uh, yeah, I was just sitting back there thinking, this is such an awesome meeting. Uh, you were all such incredibly well-versed and dedicated public servants. And, uh, you know, Perry, for years, you've been a role model to me. And, uh, it's, it's plain to see that, uh, uh, you know, you and the council of this town do such an incredible job. And I really can't thank you enough for having us here and being willing to work with us on the Enough Act and, and many other initiatives besides which, so thank you for that.
Thank you, you're welcome anytime. And I'm, I know we're not quite as interesting as what it used to be when you were in Tony Town, their council meeting. But, uh, we, we, we learn from everybody, you know? And we go to our MML meetings and we sat around, talked to everybody. So, we kinda learn and see what's going on in the other communities. And always appreciate you coming to a lot of our activities in town, so.
Always, always a pleasure. I learned so much from all of you as well.
Thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving and God bless you all.
Same to you, thank you very much. Okay, any other comments or concerns for us this evening? Okay, uh, I have here that our next work session will be December the eighth. Our next council meeting is December the twenty-second. So, that's the one that Dawn always has plenty of nice food for us for our Christmas party here, so.
And I guess she will now too.
She always does. She's never let us down. And the more that you guys come and eat, the less I have to take home. So, please come and eat. We'll have, uh, fellowship that evening, we'll have a nice evening once our meeting's over. And all, everybody's welcome. If we have nothing else, we're in line for adjournment.
I make a motion.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay, have a motion and a second, any questions? Hearing none, all those in favor, aye?
Aye.
Those, thank you very much. We'll see you next month.